Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 14th, 2021 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. It is a pleasure to see everyone in person, and at this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please join me in a moment of silent meditation or prayer. Please rise now and join me in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, great to see you. We have some proclamations tonight.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, it's been a little over a year since I could say that. So it's a pleasure to be with you tonight and live, in person, and in living color on PAC 14. So today, we are recognizing two very important groups of people in our community. And the first is the group that I started my day with this morning, and that is our sanitation workers, who start early every morning and help us keep our city clean and help keep our entire community clean. As we know, those things that are not picked up end up blown around our streets, in our lawns, and detract from the quality community that we want to have. So we're ever grateful for the job that they do. So I have a proclamation in their honor. Whereas the first landfill was developed in Crete around 3,000 B.C. by digging large holes for refuse, creating the earliest documented sanitation regulation efforts, and sanitation workers have since selflessly and tirelessly shown up to the job in all weather conditions and environments, most recently during the COVID-19 pandemic, to keep our streets clean, ensure safe disposal of household and commercial waste, and prevent contamination from a variety of viruses and bacteria. And the recognition of sanitation workers was first initiated by Arwood Waste CEO John Arwood in June 2012 with National Garbage Man Day, but as the popularity of the activities grew, it evolved into a week-long celebration. And in 2020, the sanitation workforce reached 58,477 in the United States, the average employee age of 48. The dedicated men and women employed by the city of Salisbury make significant contributions to the safety, health, and welfare of our citizens by processing millions of tons of refuse and recycling, critically, every year. And the city of Salisbury Sanitation Division is responsible for more than trash collection. It manages our community's recycling of paper, glass, aluminum yard debris, and cardboard, along with street sweeping, bulk pickup, and the distribution of new recycling bins, such as the one I received today, and trash cans. And city sanitation workers continue to stand ready to serve the citizens of Salisbury, regardless of the circumstances, as their jobs must be done every day, no matter what. Now therefore, I, Jacob R. Day, the mayor of the city of Salisbury -- forgive me, it's been a while -- do hereby proclaim June 13th through 19th, 2021, Sanitation Workers Week in our city in celebration and in support of Sanitation Workers Week. And I invite all citizens to join me in thanking the hard-working men and women of the city's sanitation division for ensuring the cleanliness of our community. Thank you all for a job well done. And I'm going to toss it over to Ron Airy, the supervisor of our sanitation division, who's on by Zoom. Ron, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I just like to express my appreciation for the visit we had from you guys this morning. I can't tell you how much it meant to my entire team that were thrilled. So I just would like to say thank you very much, and thank you for the recognition. It's really appreciated.
Ron, we appreciate you and your team. Thank you for what you do. I also see that we've got Ben Baker on. Ben, part of the Field Operations Team, thank you for all you provide. Now, I'd like to call our new Director of Field Operations -- I say new, I mean, you know, new to me, because I just got home. Jenna Potvin, Jenna, would you come forward? Jenna, anything you'd like to add?
Just on behalf of the Department of Field Operations Sanitation Division, thank you. This honor is truly appreciated. We've got a -- you said like 58,000. We've got a team of 13, including Ron. So we've got 12 out there on the streets every day, picking up refuse, street sweeping, and a variety of things, and they work really hard. And today, we learned that there has never been a specific honor, celebration, of their contribution to the city, as far as the Sanitation Workers Week before. One gentleman, he's worked with the city for 28 years, he was truly, truly thankful. So this is your proclamation, and the honor is truly celebrated or truly appreciated. Yes, thank you.
And as we discussed this morning, let's not let it be another 28 years before we do it again. We're going to make it an annual thing. Okay. The next proclamation that I have is for a group that has been serving our community for decades. This is also a group to which I belong, to the junior junior version, the interact club in high school. Rotary International and the Rotary Club of Salisbury seek to encourage improved human relations and understanding with the four-way test message, which is a useful guide to better living for all people in the things we think, do, and say. And many of you will be familiar with that four-way test, because you've seen it on our sidewalks. Since 1963, the Rotary Club of Salisbury has observed four-way test week, during which a local citizen is recognized for his or her personal or professional life according to the tenets of the four-way test. First, is it the truth? Second, is it fair to all concerned? Third, will it build goodwill and better friendships? And four, will it be beneficial to all concerned? I saw Rotarian and City Council President Jack Heath mouthing along as I read this, as I read the four-way test. But this proclamation also shares that many businesses and industries have adopted the four-way test to help define their business and personal philosophy, and I believe it's something that we can take to heart as we make decisions and deliberations in this room. So now therefore, I, Jacob R. Day, Mayor of the city of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim the week of June 20th, 2021, as four-way test week in our city in celebration of the Rotary's 2021 presentation on June 24th, 2021, to this year's recipient of the four-way test award. Gentlemen.
I want to do a photograph.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that.
Bill, just thank you for the recognition. It's an honor to serve the city and the county with what we do. We are in our 101st year as a local Rotary Club of Salisbury. Thank you. So it's special. Thank you for the recognition, and we love trying to serve our citizens. Bill?
I can say no more than that. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we congratulate the Rotary Club, and we certainly thank our sanitation workers who do a marvelous job. Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake and Ms. Jackson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, with Ms. Gregory, Ms. Jackson. I got you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
On the consent agenda tonight, we have the May 17th, 2021 Work Session Minutes, May 24th, 2021 Legislative Session Minutes, and Resolution 3108 approving the appointment of Diallo Sesums to the Sustainability Advisory Committee for term ending June 2024. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? The consent agenda is approved by a vote of five to zero. At this time, I would like to thank Diallo Sesums, who I believe is on the call with us, and we appreciate it very much. We wish you the best, and thank you for taking the opportunity to serve.
Thank you.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the Award of Bids.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson and Ms. Blake. Good evening, Mrs. Miller.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Good to see everybody in person as well. So we have two items this evening. The first is an Award of Bid for Contract Number ITBA-21-102. That's the West Isabella and Church Street pipelining, plus it also included on-call pipelining services. We did put the bid out on March 15th. We opened bids on April 15th. We did have nine responses, which is a very good response. The lowest responsive and responsible bidder was Standard Pipe Services out of Newark, Delaware. The pricing for just the West Isabella and Church Street pipelining came in at $198,748.50. That doesn't include any of the on-call work that we might need later, but we did get unit prices, so that when we get invoiced, we look at those unit prices and compare it back to the contract pricing. So again, this is an indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity contract as well. We did stick a renewal clause in there, so that the departments can utilize this contract, possibly up for an additional two years, and they'll place purchase orders for services as necessary. We did follow standard bidding practices by publicly posting the solicitation on not only the city of Salisbury's procurement portal, but on the e-Maryland Marketplace Advantage portal as well. And the departmental memo provides a little bit further insight for your reference. So at this time, the Department of Procurement does request council's approval to award this contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, as indicated.
Questions from the council? No questions? Okay.
Okay. And the last item is a request for declaration of surplus. It's from the Salisbury Police Department. It's a duty weapon to be given as a retirement gift to Lisa Perdue.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the Award of Bids, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
The Award of Bids is approved by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Forgive me if this is out of order, but can I take just a second? I don't have in front of me how many years of service Officer Lisa Perdue had with the city, but she's had a long career, and want to acknowledge her service. In the time that I've been an elected official with the city, one of the most challenging days was shooting at -- an officer involved shooting at Woodcock Park, a very young man having a mental health issue, who had a BB gun that looked like a real gun, pulled it on an officer. A shot was fired, it missed, no one was hit, thankfully. But on that video, one of the things you can see is the responsible, responsive, and ultimately calming influence that Officer Perdue had. So just want to thank her for her service.
Well said. Thank you. We agree. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3109.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. Mr. Kitzrow.
Resolution Number 3109, a resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into, on behalf of the city of Salisbury, an agreement with Roof Service of Delmarva LLC for the purpose of the city of Salisbury conveying a portion of the city-owned real property to Roof Service of Delmarva LLC in exchange for Roof Service of Delmarva LLC conveying a portion of real property identified as 116 West Chestnut Street to the city of Salisbury. Whereas the city of Salisbury, the city is the fee simple owner of all that certain real property identified as MAP 107, Parcel 0994, Maryland Tax Account Number 09-062122, located at West Chestnut Street, Salisbury, Maryland, 21801, the city of Salisbury or COS parcel. And whereas Roof Services of Delmarva LLC and Maryland Limited Liability Company Roof Service is the fee simple owner of that certain real property, having a premise address of 116 West Chestnut Street, Salisbury, Maryland, 21801, being all that same real property, more particularly identified on as MAP 107, Parcel 0093, Maryland Tax Account Number 09-062114, the R-SOD parcel. And whereas to utilize the R-SOD parcel for fence storage, Roof Service has requested the city enter into an agreement to swap the property, the agreement, with Roof Service, providing the city's conveyance of a portion of the city of Salisbury parcel to Roof Service, and Roof Service's conveyance of a portion of the R-SOD parcel to the city. Said conveyances are herein after referred to collectively as the land swap, as more particularly shown on the sketch plat, excuse me, attached to and incorporated within the agreement as Exhibit A. Subject to the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement, a copy of the agreement, which is subject of this resolution, is attached hereto and incorporated within as Exhibit 1. Everyone should have that in their packet. And whereas Roof Service's requested for the land swap has been reviewed by the Department of Infrastructure and Development, the city DID, and the city DID has informed the requested land swap to be beneficial to both the city and the roof service as a land swap or assist with traffic flow to an existing public alley and street right-of-way adjacent to the city of COS parcel and the R-SOD parcel. And whereas the city of Salisbury does not object to the land swap as provided in the agreement, which upon settlement of the conveyances contemplated thereunder will result in the adjustment of the boundary lines for each of the R-SOD parcel and the COS parcel, as more particularly shown on Exhibit A to the agreement. And whereas the land swap as provided in the agreement attached hereto incorporated herein as Exhibit 1, an adjustment of the boundary lines for the R-SOD parcel and of the COS parcel resulting therefrom, will allow each of the roof service and in the city to continue the use of their respective properties and will resolve any issues the parties may have regarding the boundary lines of the R-SOD parcel, and that the COS parcel and/or each party use of their respective property. And whereas pursuant to the terms and conditions contained in the agreement attached hereto incorporated herein as Exhibit 1, Roof Service shall be responsible for the payment of all costs and expenses arising from or associated with the land swap, including but not limited to the preparation and/or recording of the subdivision plat, all deeds, and any other documents necessary to effectuate the land swap. And whereas any and all documents and plats prepared for or in connection with the land swap shall be reviewed and approved by the city solicitor prior to the mayor's execution thereof on behalf of the city, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the city of Salisbury that certain agreement to swap property by and between Roof Services of Delmarva LLC and the city of Salisbury, Maryland, attached hereto incorporated herein as Exhibit 1, the agreement. Section 2, any and all documents or plats prepared by Roof Service of Delmarva LLC for purposes of or in connection with the conveyance of real property contemplated by the agreement shall be reviewed and approved by the city solicitor prior to the execution thereof by the mayor on behalf of the city of Salisbury. Section 3, the mayor or his designated representative is hereby authorized to take on behalf of the city of Salisbury all such actions, including the negotiation, execution, and/or delivery of all deeds, settlement sheets, or any other ancillary documents as may be necessary to complete the transactions contemplated by the terms of the agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Kitzrow. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 3109, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And the chair votes aye. Resolution Number 3109 is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 3110.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Mr. Kitzrow.
Resolution Number 3110, a resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into, on behalf of the city of Salisbury, an amended and restated annexation agreement with the Faith Baptist Church of Salisbury, Maryland, and Jeffrey L. Clemmons and Kelly B. Clemmons, setting forth the terms and conditions governing the annexation and development of all that certain real property identified as MAP 0021 Grid 0019 Parcel 0184, MAP 0021 Grid 0019 Parcel 004, and MAP 0021 Grid 0019 Parcel 0182. Whereas pursuant to Resolution Number 1466 dated February 12, 2007, the Council of the City of Salisbury, the council, approve the city's annexation of all that certain real property identifies as MAP 002 Grid 0019 Parcel 0184, Maryland Account Identifier, ESTAD Account Number 05-091470, consisting of 25.1800 acres more or less, having a premise address of Daggsboro Road, Salisbury, Maryland, 21804 Parcel 184, MAP 0021 Grid 001 Parcel 004, ESTAD Account Number 05-121027, consisting of 4.1300 acres more or less, having a premise address of 0505 Daggsboro Road, Salisbury, Maryland, 21804 Parcel 40. And MAP 0021 Grid 0019 Parcel 0182, ESTAD Account Number 05-099, excuse me, 05-090431, consisting of 15.07 acres more or less, having a premise address of 05, excuse me, 30505 Daggsboro Road, Salisbury, Maryland, 21804 Parcel 182. Parcel 184 Parcel 40 and Parcel 182 are hereafter referred to collectively as the annexed property. And whereas, as conditions of the city annexation of the annexed property, as fore-said, the city and the Faith Baptist Church of Salisbury, Maryland, and Vernon Essent Land Development Incorporated, constituting the owners of the annexed property at such time, entered into an annexation agreement dated February 5, 2007, and recorded among the land records of Wycomica County and Libra 2828 Folio 457, the original agreement, which set forth the terms and conditions governing the annexation of the annexed property and the development thereof. And whereas Faith Baptist Church of Salisbury, Maryland, and Jeffrey L. Clemmons and Kelly B. Clemmons, constituting the owners of the annexed property, as the date and here of this resolution collectively, the petitioners desire to sell Parcel 184 and Parcel 40 to a third-party buyer for the development of the such property, however, due to changes in the market occurring since the date of the original agreement, the city and the petitioners have determined the terms and conditions set forth in the original agreement make such sale and development of Parcel 184 and Parcel 40 infeasible. And whereas the city pursuant to the authority contained in the Maryland Code Local Government Section 4-101 at SEC and petitioners have agreed to amend the terms and conditions contained in the original agreement, as more particularly set forth in the amended and restated annexation agreement, the amended agreement, attached hereto and incorporated herein as Exhibit A. And whereas by this resolution, the council hereby approves amended agreement attached herunto incorporated herein as Exhibit A, and hereby authorize the mayor's execution thereof on behalf of the city, and upon the mayor's execution of the amended agreement, all of the terms set forth in the amended agreement shall be deemed and otherwise construed to supersede and replace the original agreement. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, the mayor's hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the city of Salisbury that certain amended and restated annexation agreement by and between the city of Salisbury and the Faith Baptist Church of Salisbury, Maryland, Jeffrey L. Clemmons and Kelly B. Clemmons attached hereto and incorporated herein as Exhibit A, the amended agreement. Section 2 is the intention of the mayor and the council of the city of Salisbury that each provision of this resolution be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section 3, it is further the intention of the mayor and the council of the city of Salisbury that in any section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision of this resolution shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law. Such adjudications shall apply only to the sections, paragraph, subsections, clauses, or provisions so adjudged, and all other provisions of the resolution shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 4, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the resolution, as if such recitals were specifically set forth at the length in this section 4. That is it.
Thank you, Mr. Kitzrow. Just for clarification, the first reading of the address, I believe, was 50505, but I believe the correct address is 30505. Correct?
That is correct.
So we can note that. Okay. Questions from the council?
I'll have Andy read it again, but you're good?
No, we're good.
Okay.
Hearing no questions, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 3110, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The chair votes aye. Resolution Number 3110 is approved by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Kitzrow. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2660 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake, Ms. Jackson. Mr. Sullivan, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President. Members of the council, Ordinance Number 2660 establishing the budget for FY '22 has been amended since its adoption on first reader at the April 26, 2021 mayor and council meeting. So before reading the ordinance as amended for adoption on second reader, I will specifically identify those amendments to bring them to your attention. After reading the ordinance as amended, I would respectfully request that a motion be made to approve the amendments that I specifically identified. After that, I would respectfully request a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2660 for second reader as amended. Is that correct, Mr. President?
Correct. Thank you.
With respect to the amendments made to Ordinance Number 2660, I bring your attention to line 27 on page 1. The words added to Ordinance Number 2660 on lines 27 through 30 is new language that has been added to Ordinance Number 2660 since its approval on first reader. No other amendments have been made. Excuse me. There have been amendments made beyond that, and that is the Schedule D that's referenced in lines 27 through 30. Other than that, no other amendments. Ordinance Number 2660, an ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the city of Salisbury, Maryland for the period July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022, establishing the levy for the general fund for the same fiscal period, and establishing the appropriation for the water and sewer parking authority, city marina, and stormwater funds. Be it ordained by the city of Salisbury, Maryland that the amounts listed in Schedule A, operating budget appropriations, are hereby appropriated for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022, to fund operations of the city of Salisbury, Maryland. Be it further ordained by the city of Salisbury, Maryland that the amounts listed in Schedule B, capital project appropriations, are hereby appropriate for capital projects. Be it further ordained by the city of Salisbury, Maryland that the amounts listed in Schedule C, anticipated grant expenditures, are hereby appropriated for the grants listed, and the mayor is authorized to enter into any necessary agreements or memoranda in order to receive and expend these funds. Be it further ordained by the city of Salisbury, Maryland that the amounts listed in Schedule D, anticipated special revenue fund expenditures, are hereby appropriated for the activities listed, and the mayor is authorized to enter into any necessary agreements or memoranda in order to receive and expend these funds. Be it further ordained then, the tax levy be in the same be hereby set at 90, excuse me, .9832 dollars per $100 of assessed valuation of all real property at $3.51 per $100 of assessed valuation for all personal property categorized as utility. assessed valuation for all personal property categorized as utilities, and at two dollars and forty cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation for all other personal property, subject to taxation by the City of Salisbury for general fund purposes, including debt service purposes, exclusive of revenues derived from the water and sewer fund for debt service purposes attributed to water and sewer activities. And all taxes levied, all taxes levied by this ordinance shall be liens from and after July one, two thousand and twenty-one, and shall be due and payable as specified in Title fourteen of the Tax Property Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland as amended. And be it further ordained by the Salisbury City Council that a public hearing on the proposed budget ordinance will be held at six P. M. on May tenth, two thousand and twenty-one via Zoom video conference. And be it further ordained by the Salisbury City Council that this ordinance shall take effect upon final passage.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
You're welcome.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amendments that Mr. Sullivan added into the document.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda? I'll give that one to Mrs. Gregory. Questions or comments on the amendment? Hearing none, I'll call the amendment motion. All those in favor of the amendments as made on ordinance number two, six, six, zero, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. The amendments as read are approved by a vote of five to zero. I will now call the motion on the main motion for, to approve ordinance two, six, six, zero as amended. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number two, six, six, zero is approved by a vote of five to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, six, one for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mrs. Gregory. Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the council's attention, ordinance number two, six, six, one has not been amended since it was approved for first reader at the April twenty-sixth mayor and council meeting. Ordinance number two, six, six, one, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland to amend water and sewer rates to increase rates by six percent, and making said changes effective for all bills dated October one, two thousand and twenty-one and thereafter, and until subsequently revised or changed. Whereas the water and sewer rates must be revised in accordance with the proposed fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two budget of the City of Salisbury and the appropriations thereby made and established for purposes of the water and sewer departments. Now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the council of the City of Salisbury that the water and sewer rate schedule set forth herein shall be adopted as follows. Section one, water and sewer rate schedules. Schedule I, metered water changes in city rates, residential and small commercial, minimum charge, twenty-three dollars and eighty cents per quarter, commodity charge, three dollars and fifty-five cents per thousand gallons. Commercial, customer charge, four hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents per quarter, commodity charge, two dollars and six cents per thousand gallons. Large commercial industrial, customer charge, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventeen cents per quarter, commodity charge, one dollar and sixty-five cents per thousand gallons. Schedule Roman numeral two, metered water charges outside city rates, residential and small commercial, minimum charge, forty-seven dollars and sixty cents per quarter, commodity charge, seven dollars and ten cents per thousand gallons. Commercial, customer charge, eight hundred and ninety dollars, fifty-eight cents per quarter, commodity charge, four dollars and fourteen cents per thousand gallons. Large commercial industrial, customer charge, one thousand, three hundred, seventy-six dollars and thirty-six cents per quarter, commodity charge, three dollars and thirty-three cents per thousand gallons. Schedule Roman numeral three, metered water charges Warwick Community College and Urban Service District rates, residential and small commercial, minimum charge, thirty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents per quarter, commodity charge, five dollars and thirty-three cents per thousand gallons. Commercial, customer charge, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents per quarter, commodity charge, three dollars and ten cents per thousand gallons. Large commercial industrial, customer charge, one thousand, thirty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents per quarter, commodity charge, two dollars and forty-nine cents per thousand gallons. Schedule Roman numeral four, sewer charges in city rates, residential and small commercial, minimum charge, fifty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents per quarter, commodity charge, eight dollars and eighty-one cents per thousand gallons. Commercial, customer charge, one thousand, one hundred, ten dollars and twenty-six cents per quarter, commodity charge, five dollars and thirteen cents per thousand gallons. Large commercial industrial, customer charge, one thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-three cents per quarter, commodity charge, four dollars and ten cents per thousand gallons. Schedule Roman numeral five, sewer charges outside city rates, residential and small commercial, minimum charge, one hundred, seventeen dollars and fifty-six cents per quarter, commodity charge, seventeen dollars and sixty-three cents per thousand gallons. Commercial, customer charge, two thousand, two hundred, twenty dollars and fifty-one cents per quarter, commodity charge, ten dollars, twenty-three cents per thousand gallons. Large commercial industrial, customer charge, three thousand, four hundred, twenty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents per quarter, commodity charge, eight dollars, twenty-three cents per thousand gallons. Schedule Roman numeral six, sewer charges, Warwick Community College and Urban Service District rates, residential and small commercial, minimum charge, eighty-eight dollars and seventeen cents per quarter, commodity charge, thirteen dollars and twenty-three cents per thousand gallons. Commercial, customer charge, one thousand, six hundred, sixty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents per quarter, commodity charge, seven dollars and sixty-six cents per thousand gallons. Large commercial industrial, customer charge, two thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents per quarter, commodity charge, six dollars and eighteen cents per thousand gallons. Schedule seven, sewer charges, sewer-only customers. One to two fixtures, quarterly in-city rate, seventy-five dollars and seventeen cents, quarterly outside-city rate, one hundred, fifty dollars and thirty-five cents, quarterly urban service district rate, one hundred, twelve dollars and seventy-seven cents. Three to five fixtures, quarterly in-city rate, one hundred, twelve dollars and seventy-seven cents, quarterly outside-city rate, two hundred, twenty-five dollars and fifty-four cents, quarterly urban service district rate, one hundred, sixty-nine dollars and fifteen cents. Six to twenty fixtures, quarterly in-city rate, one hundred, sixty-two dollars and seven cents, quarterly outside-city rate, three hundred, twenty-four dollars and fourteen cents. Quarterly urban service district rate, two hundred, forty-three dollars and ten cents. For every five fixtures over twenty, quarterly in-city rate, sixty-six dollars and eighty-four cents, quarterly outside-city rate, one hundred, thirty-three dollars and sixty-six cents, quarterly urban service district rate, one hundred dollars, twenty-four cents. Schedule Roman numeral eight, commercial and industrial activities. For each fire service, annual in-city rate, three hundred and seventy-three dollars, annual outside-city rate, seven hundred and forty-six dollars. For each standby operational service, three hundred and seventy-three dollars is the annual in-city rate, annual outside-city rate, seven hundred and forty-six dollars. Definitions. Residential and small commercial customers. These customers have average water utilization of less than three hundred thousand gallons in a quarter. Commercial customers. These customers have average water utilization of three hundred thousand gallons to six hundred thousand gallons per quarter. Large commercial industrial, these, excuse me, these customers have average water utilization over six hundred thousand gallons per quarter. Average water utilization per quarter. This will be based on annual consumption divided by four to get average quarterly water utilization. calculation of bills. For residential and small commercial customers, the minimum charge for both water and sewer will apply if water service is turned on at the water meter and usage is zero to six thousand gallons per quarter. Only the city can turn a meter on and off. For usage of seven thousand gallons and above, the commodity charge will be applied for each one thousand gallons used, and the minimum charge will not be applied. For commercial and large commercial industrial customers, every quarterly bill will receive a customer charge for both water and sewer. Then for each thousand gallons used, the appropriate commodity charge will be applied. Be it further, excuse me, be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the City of Salisbury as follows. Section two is the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all the provisions herein. Section three is further the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section four, the recitals set forth herein above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance, as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this section four. Section five, this ordinance shall become effective with the bills dated October one, two thousand and twenty-one and after. Section six, a public hearing on the proposed ordinance will be held at six P. M. on May tenth, two thousand and twenty-one via Zoom video conference. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, we'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two, six, six, one for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number two, six, six, one is approved by a vote of five to zero. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, six, two for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Mrs. Gregory. Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the council's attention, ordinance number six, or excuse me, ordinance number two, six, six, two, establishing the fees to be charged by the City of Salisbury for the period of FY twenty-two has been amended since its adoption on first reader at the April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one mayor and council meeting. Before reading the ordinance as amended, I will identify specifically the amendments that have been made to the ordinance since its adoption, excuse me, since its approval on first reader. After reading the ordinance as amended, I would respectfully request a motion to approve the amendments to ordinance number two, six, six, two as identified specifically, and then a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, six, two as amended for second reader. With respect to amendments contained within the body of the ordinance, the word "the" has been added to line twenty-seven on page one. Then, with respect to Exhibit one, defined within the ordinance as the FY twenty-two fee schedule, the following amendments have been made. At the top of page five of Exhibit one, amphitheater hourly rental, twenty-five dollars per hour weekend, max two-hour block, as-is, has been added. Additionally, amphitheater hourly rental, ten dollars per hour weekday, max two-hour block, as-in, as-is, has also been added to Exhibit one. On page thirteen of Exhibit one, the following amendment has been made to the fee identified as work exceeding two hours, SPD will charge attorney hourly fee and hourly fee for records tech. The number one hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents has been inserted, and the dollar figure seventy-five has been deleted. Finally, on page seventeen of Exhibit one, the following amendments have been made. The sale of consumer fireworks has been added as a fee category. The fees for standalone tent, stand, or other commercial space predominantly utilized for the sale of consumer fireworks has been added as a fee contained within the FY twenty-two fee schedule. The fee for that activity is two hundred and fifty dollars. Additionally, other commercial space predominantly utilized for the sale of goods other than consumer fireworks is a fee that has been added to FY twenty-two fee schedule, and the fee for that activity is a hundred and twenty-five dollars. I will now read the ordinance as amended, but I will not read each and every fee contained within the fee schedule. Ordinance number two, six, six, two, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland to set fees for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two and thereafter, unless and until subsequently revised or changed. Whereas the fees charged by the City of Salisbury are reviewed and then revised in accordance with the adoption of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two budget of the City of Salisbury. And whereas the fee amounts set forth in FY two thousand and twenty-two fee schedule attached hereto and incorporated herein as Exhibit one, identify and list all fee amounts to be charged and otherwise assessed by the City of Salisbury for the period of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two in accordance with the adoption of the fiscal year twenty, twenty-two budget of the City of Salisbury. And whereas some fee amounts to be charged and otherwise assessed by the City of Salisbury in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two may have been inadvertently omitted from the FY two thousand and twenty-two fee schedule attached hereto and incorporated herein as Exhibit one. And any fee amount not listed in the said FY two thousand and twenty-two fee schedule shall be and remain the fee amount set forth in the City of Salisbury municipal code. Now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the council of the City of Salisbury as follows. The fee amounts set forth in the FY two thousand and twenty-two fee schedule attached hereto as Exhibit one and incorporated herein, as if fully set forth in this section one, are hereby adopted by the council of the City of Salisbury. And furthermore, the fee amounts set forth in the FY twenty, in the FY twenty-two fee schedule shall supersede the corresponding fee amounts set forth in the City of Salisbury municipal code until one or more of such fee amounts are subsequently amended. Be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the City of Salisbury as follows. Section two is the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all the provisions herein. Section three, it is further the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section four, the recitals set forth herein above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance, as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this section four. Section five, this ordinance shall become effective as of July one, two thousand and twenty-one. Section six, a public hearing on the proposed ordinance will be held at six P. M. on May tenth, two thousand and twenty-one via Zoom video conference. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amendments as read by Mr. Sullivan relative to ordinance number two, six, six, two.
So moved.
Ms. Blake?
Second.
Ms. Jackson. Questions or comments on the amendments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the amendments made to ordinance number two, six, six, two, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The chair votes aye. The amendments are passed by a vote of five to zero. We'll now entertain, any questions further on ordinance number two, six, six, two?
All the, you know, we had discussed some stuff with one of the last, one of the work sessions about the increase in the rental fees, and they're supposed to go back and look at some stuff and come back to us, but, and I missed the one meeting, so I don't know if it was discussed there, but we never received any more information.
Mr. Kitrow, can you bring us up to speed on that?
I'm trying to recall, yeah, if, because I must have missed one, one, one of our meetings, too. The question is, did we send back additional information to the council regarding the, the rental fee information? I just want.
Yeah, because we had received the analysis on, the cost analysis, which basically reflected the existing fees. And then people were talking about, oh, well, there's this and this, it wasn't included in the analysis, but we're still increasing the fees. So there was, so there was going to be some. So there was, so there was going to be some looking at some of the other aspects of it.
And, yeah, and we do have our finance director, Keith, here with us. I believe we did have an additional presentation that had some of those additional fees wrapped in. It was, as I recall, it was some, we looked at those, we added in those extra things. It wasn't the simple fee structure, but I believe we did share something that was different than the very first presentation, and then that came back. That might have been when, when you were not there.
Could I ask Mr. Corddry to just summarize it briefly?
Good evening. Yes, we did have another session, and at that meeting, we presented a, more of a global view of the cost by each department in total and the time that each department spends. So instead of trying to address it on a per occurrence basis, we looked at it as a department and the percentage of time each lot, each, each department spends on that activity. And then we took other lines. For example, without munis, they could not process the landlord license fees, so part of the cost of munis was applied also. So it was more of a holistic approach that took all of the line items that relate to the, the process of landlord licensing, and it accounted for and exceeded the amount that is being charged.
Okay. Did we, I don't remember seeing an email or distribution from that information, so...
Yeah. What was presented in that meeting, we can, we can certainly share it. Do you know, Kim, if we, if we had an email? If not, we can still supply it.
I can pull it from the video.
Okay.
Saved and...
Yeah, and the only, the, the only question that, the reason that we did that was because someone brought up the fact that it should be, it should be, should it be that the initial cost of the rental would be a cer, a higher amount, and that the subsequent renewals would be a lower amount? And that's what, what brought on the, the assessment that was made. And then we, they did go over, my recollection is that they did go over each of the, now you could argue about the percentage of each component, but in, in essence, I think it was fairly straightforward. Thank you, Mr. Corddry. Any other questions on the amendment? I mean, on the ordinance?
Ordinance.
All right, hearing none, I'll call the motion on ordinance. All those in favor of ordinance number two, six, six, two, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number two, six, six, two is approved by a vote of five to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, six, eight.
Some of...
Second. Ms. Jackson? Mr. Boda? Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance number two, six, six, eight, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $36,342.89, and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for offsetting COVID-19 expenses. Whereas, on March 13, 2020, the President of the United States declared that the ongoing coronavirus disease 2019, COVID-19 pandemic, was of sufficient severity and magnitude to warrant an emergency declaration for all states, tribes, territories, and the District of Columbia pursuant to section 501B of the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act. Whereas, in accordance with section 502 of the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act, eligible emergency protective measures taken to respond to the COVID-19 emergency at the direction or guidance of public health officials may be reimbursed under category B of the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Public Assistance Program. Whereas, the City of Salisbury incurred substantial expenses preparing for and responding to the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas, the city submitted a project grant application to FEMA for funding to offset expenses related to the acquisition of personal protective equipment purchased in response to the COVID-19 crisis. Whereas FEMA funding assistance was initially provided to the city at a 75% federal cost share rate, resulting in the city receiving a reimbursement payment of $109,028.70. Whereas FEMA has now elected to provide additional funding assistance to the, excuse me, whereas FEMA has now elected to provide additional funding assistance to the city to cover the remaining 25% of the costs that were incurred. Whereas the remaining 25% of the costs that were incurred by the city were previously covered by a grant from the Wycomico County Health Department, which they awarded to the city from the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act funds that they received for COVID-19-related expenditures. Whereas the city expects to receive reimbursement from FEMA in the amount of $36,342.89 for the remaining 25% of COVID-19-related expenditures, as reflected in the exhibits attached here too and incorporated herein as if fully set forth in this ordinance. Whereas the city will be required to forward the total amount of those funds to the Wycomico County Health Department to reimburse them for the CARES Act grant funds previously awarded. Whereas section seven dash twenty-nine of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the Council of the City of Salisbury. Whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four-fifths of the Council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section one, Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Federal Emergency Management Agency on behalf of the City of Salisbury for the city's acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $36,342.89. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section two, the City of Salisbury's grant fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows. Increase DHS FEMA revenue account number 10500-425120-18006 by $36,342.89. Increase SFD medical expense account number 10500-546016-18006 by $36,342.89. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section three is the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section four is further the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section five, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this section five. Section six, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two, six, six, eight, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number two, six, six, eight is approved by a vote of five to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, six, nine.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda? Ms. Blake? Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance number two, six, six, nine, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to establish a program to encourage hotel and large-scale residential development and revitalization in the downtown area of Salisbury, to be known as the Horizon Program. Whereas, the city seeks to incentivize the construction and expansion of business interests in and near the downtown area, specifically the Central Business Zoning District and Riverfront Redevelopment Zoning Districts, as adopted via resolution number two, six, six, excuse me, resolution number two, six, zero, zero, in the envisioned Salisbury Master Plan in order to increase the amount of economic activity in these areas. And whereas implementing the Hotel or Residential Incentive Zone Program will encourage financially responsible businesses to construct or expand hotel and residential business interests in these areas, which may further result in positive economic and social effects, including, but not limited to, increases in cultural activity opportunities, employment opportunities, and business activities. Whereas, the city through the Department of Infrastructure and Development shall process applications connected to the Horizon Program to ensure compliance with the program, and shall review and approve all completed applications before benefits tied to the program are approved and granted to developers. And whereas, the city has developed a, excuse me, has developed a Horizon Program Guidelines and Application with specific requirements that shall be monitored and administered by the Department of Infrastructure and Development in order to ensure that all information and submissions are correct and properly considered. Whereas, the mayor joins with the city council in recommend, excuse me, in recommending the implementation of the Horizon Program and application process. Whereas, the city's establishment of the Horizon Program hereunder is authorized by section nine dash three, two, four, D of the Property Tax Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section one, Title III of the Salisbury City Code entitled Revenue and Finance be and hereby is amended by adding a new chapter 3.25 titled Hotel or Residential Incentive Zone Program as follows. Chapter 3.25 Hotel or Residential Incentive Zone Program. Section 3.25.010, definitions. In this section, the following words have the following meanings indicated. Multifamily has the meaning set forth in Title 17, zoning, section 17.04.120. Hotel has the meaning set forth in chapter 5.68. Subsection A, the Horizon Program is hereby established for the purpose of accelerating the construction or expansion of hotel or multifamily residential development in the Central Business Zoning District and Riverfront Redevelopment Zoning Districts. Subsection B, the city council hereby adopts the Horizon Program Guidelines in the application submitted with this ordinance and attached here too and incorporated herein as exhibit A as the initial approved application, and grants administrative powers to the Director of the Department of Infrastructure and Development to process and monitor submitted applications in conjunction with the Department of Finance, to make necessary changes to the application for the Horizon Program, and to adopt such rules and regulations as may be necessary for the proper and efficient administration of the Horizon Program. Subsection C, an application for the Horizon Program shall be subject to final approval by a resolution of the city council. Subsection D, upon approval of an application for the Horizon Program by a resolution of the city council, the Department of Infrastructure and Development shall prepare a Horizon Agreement for execution by the applicant and the city. Subsection E, all real property tax credits received through the Horizon Program shall run with the land and be payable only to the then-current owners of the real property. Subsection F, the Horizon Program is hereby established for a period of 10 years from the date of final passage of this ordinance. The program shall be value, excuse me, the program shall be reevaluated prior to the end of the third year. The city council may approve modifications to the Horizon Program and suspend or terminate the continuance of the Horizon Program at any time by resolution of the city council. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section two is the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section three is further the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section four, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this section four. Section five, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments from the council? I just have one comment. I truly believe that this program is going to be a catalyst for the continued growth in our downtown area, putting feet on the street, and that's what we need to, to get to the next level. And I'm looking forward to voting positive on this. I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two, six, six, nine, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number two, six, six, nine is approved...
Mr. President, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I hate to keep doing this, but may I add a comment?
Certainly.
I just want to say a couple of things on ordinance two, six, six, nine, Horizon Program. One, this was developed while I was away. I want to acknowledge Andy Kitzrow, Deputy City Administrator, who put a ton of work into this. I also want to thank the council for, for their support and, and working through a, a complex program, working with our state legislators to, to change state law, and my understanding is that the town of Ocean City and other parts of our state are now starting to consider this. You know, it's kind of stunning that, although it's been many decades since we realized that a mix of uses in an urban center is a good idea, that the incentives haven't yet caught up with that. And then I want to also acknowledge the acting county executive, John Pissota, and the county council, who I know are working on advancing this and deliberating over this very soon, we hope, so. Encourage all of our council members to reach out to your county council member counterparts and show up at the county council meeting and talk to them about how important this is for the growth of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I would also like to point out while we're discussing it that when it hit the state level, it was unanimously approved, which is, which says a lot. So I think we were about to announce the, the final results of, I don't know if you've got it, Mrs. Nichols, but we're, ordinance number two, six, six, nine passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, seven, zero.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mrs. Gregory. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance number two, six, seven, zero, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury for the abandonment of an alley located between East William Street and Davis Street near East Main Street. Whereas, section 11 dash two of the Charter of the City of Salisbury grants the City of Salisbury exclusive authority over all public ways located within the municipal boundaries of the city. Whereas pursuant to the authority granted the city under section 11 dash two of the Charter, the city deems it necessary and appropriate to abandon that certain alley located within the municipal boundaries of the city and between East William Street and Davis Street near East Main Street. Whereas the alley intended for abandonment by the city pursuant to this ordinance is more particularly depicted as all that area highlighted on the Glenn Haven Platte dated May 10, 1926, and prepared by Handman Burrows Company, attached here too and incorporated herein as exhibit A. Whereas the city's abandonment of the alley hereunder will not affect any public access to public roadways. Additionally, a portion of the alley has been non-accessible for public ingress and egress for several years, excuse me, for several years preceding the date hereof. And furthermore, any use of the alley has been primarily limited to properties located nearby to the alley. Whereas the City Department of Infrastructure and Development has provided prior written notice to all owners of property abutting the alley informing each of them of the city's intention to abandon the alley and of each of their respective rights and responsibilities as to such portions of the alley abutting their respective property following the city's abandonment of the alley as intended by this ordinance. And all such property owners have responded to the City Department of Infrastructure and Development indicating their consent to the city's closure and abandonment of the alley. Whereas the City Department of Infrastructure and Development requests abandonment of the alley to ensure the owners of property abutting the alley can obtain ownership of such applicable portions of the alley if such owners so desire. Whereas upon the adoption of this ordinance, the City Department of Infrastructure and Development will provide written notice to all owners of property abutting the alley informing each of them that pursuant to the city's abandonment of the alley hereunder, the city shall not be responsible for any maintenance or costs associated with the alley as of the date this ordinance takes effect as set forth here and below. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that... that pursuant to the authority granted the city under Section 11-2 of the Charter, the alley located within the municipal boundaries of the city and between East William Street and Davis Street near East Main Street as more particularly depicted by the area highlighted on the aforementioned platte attached here too and incorporated herein as Exhibit A, is hereby closed and deemed abandoned in its entirety by the city. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 2 is the intention of the Mayor and Council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all the provisions herein. Section 3 is further the intention of the Mayor and Council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 4, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this Section 4. Section 5, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage. Section 6, upon its final passage, this ordinance shall not be codified. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments from the Council? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2670, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The Chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2670 for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. That concludes the agenda for this evening. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I will entertain public comments. If there are any, please identify yourself. Seeing none, I will turn it over to the Mayor for comments, for the good of the order.
It's good to be back.
It's good to have you back. Council members? Mr. Boda?
Good to see everybody in person. You're all a real people. Players on my Zoom screens. It's good to be back.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. Ms. Jackson?
I'm with the Mayor. I'm so glad to see everybody. I mean, I'm excited like a little kid, because it was kind of like, not, I'm not going to say boring, but it's better to be around people than to be home. And you get so lackadaisical and just get so comfortable. And I got too comfortable. So I'm just glad to see everybody and be amongst the land of the living. But please remember that COVID is still here. Make sure you get your vaccinations. Be on the doctor.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
It's fantastic to be back. Thrilled. Welcome back, Mayor Day. We're thrilled. If you're healthy, as I say every time, please donate blood. We're in a huge shortage here in the Eastern Shore region. And it only takes an hour of your time, and you help many, many people. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
Just get vaccinated if you haven't already, so you can enjoy stuff like this.
I agree with Mrs. Gregory. Please, if you haven't been vaccinated, please get vaccinated. We're doing a great job. If I remember this morning, it was 2.13 positivity rate. And the state rate is actually lower, which is really great news. So with that, I thank everybody. It is good to see everybody in person, the smiling faces. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.